I'll call this meeting of the Alabama Community College System to order. We are meeting via Zoom as we have for our April and previous April and May meetings due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I welcome everyone, all the board members and Chancellor Baker and his staff that are supporting us today. And thank you for what you're doing there in the central office carrying on. I welcome everyone that's viewing this via the internet and we appreciate your interest in our system. We're so honored to have Pastor Gary Burton of the Pent Lala Baptist Church to give our invocation today. And I'm going to note a very few of Pastor Burton's items on his resume because there are quite some very noted activities he's been involved in that would be of interest to the board. He's been the pastor of Pent Lala Baptist Church since January 1972. He served as Vice President of the Baptist Center for Ethics and is a former board member of the Baptist History and Heritage Society. He loves history and it's reflected in his service and is president of Pent Lala Historical Association and board member of the Montgomery County Historical Society. Also, he was past president of the Alabama Historical Association and president of Friends of the Alabama Department of Archives and History. He continues to serve Montgomery's Baptist Health Community as a 30-plus member of the hospital board, as a member of the Healthcare Board and a member of the Medical Ethics Committee. He's also a member of the Human Rights Committee of Volunteers of America. At this time, I'll recognize Pastor Burton. So glad to have you with us.
Well, thank you Chairman Thompson. I enjoyed our brief conversation yesterday. I appreciate the invitation to offer the invocation today. But before I do, I wish to encourage each of you in what you are doing. Your faithful oversight in the matters that come before you is more important than you may think. And let me tell you why what you're doing is important to me. I have a grandson, Jake Brown, who lives in Daphne. He completed recently his two years at the Coastal Community College in Baymanet, receiving his diploma in business management. So you're very important to me, even though you may not be in the classroom. Your influence and decision can be found there. So my gratitude to you is personal, but it's also philosophical. Because what you are doing is strengthening democracy. So before I pray, let me share a quotation from Thomas Jefferson. He wrote from Monticello to Charles Yancey on January the 6th, 1816, the following words. "If a nation expects to be ignorant and free, it expects what never was and never will be." So what you're about is highly important work. There is no detail which is unimportant. And just from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you for the service you're rendering as a member of this board. So now may we pray. We thank you, oh God, for our blessings. In settings like this, we feel our responsibility and stewardship very keenly. Give us a curiosity about the world in which we live so that we can love you with all of our minds, as well as heart, soul, and strength. Please give us new enthusiasm for the mission you've entrusted to us. Bless those who give leadership to this board and to all the colleges across the state. Help us to treat everyone with dignity and respect by knowing that each person you have made bears your image. We pray that we will be agents of healing in our troubled land. Every day that passes reminds us of your kindness and grace. So may we be ambassadors of goodwill in an age of harshness and insults. In this age of grasping for power, may we pray only for the power to serve you and others. So we offer this invocation in the spirit of gratitude. Amen. Thank you all.
Thank you Pastor Burton. Thank you again for those words of encouragement and wonderful prayer. We appreciate your presence. At this time, we'll have our pledge of allegiance. The flag is in the chancellor's office. And those that can stand, stand, and we'll have that. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of America. One that stands under God and the Constitution of America. Ms. Wilkins, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Al Thompson.
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Present.
Ms. Susan Foy.
Present.
Mr. Matthew Wood.
Present.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Present.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Present.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Present.
Mr. Blake McAnally.
Present.
Mr. Jeffrey Newman. Mr. Newman. Governor Kay Ivey. Chancellor, Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins. Item four on the agenda is the approval of our agenda. Board members have received this in advance, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion by Milton Davis.
And a motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second by Crystal.
Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? We will move to vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented signify by this roll call vote by a yes or a no.
Are we ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy.
Yes.
Mr. Matt Wood.
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally.
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
The agenda is approved. Item five is approval of the minutes of the May 13th, 2020 meeting. The board members have received these minutes in advance, had plenty of time to review them. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Moved.
Motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Right. Mr. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy.
Yes.
Mr. Matt Wood.
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally.
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Minutes are approved. Item six, public comment. Ms. Wilkins, anyone signed up for public comment?
No, sir.
Moved up. Item seven, academic and student affairs, adult education, facilities, fiscal, information technology, and workforce development. There is nothing under that section on the agenda. Move to eight, executive legal and public information. Eight A1 is a review and approval of admission statement of Trinum State Community College. This was my month's work session. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion by Milton.
Motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Ms. Wilkins.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Foy.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Davis. Mr. McAnally.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Admission statement for Trinum State Community College is approved. Item eight A2 is admission statement for Southern Union State Community College. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Foy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Foy.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. McAnally.
Yes.
And Mr. Smith.
Admission statement for Southern Union is approved. Item three, review and approval admission statement for Bevill State Community College. At this time, I'll entertain a motion only.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Woods. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Brown. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. All those in favor, all those on roll call vote on the approval of admission statement for Bevill State Community College. Ms. Wilkins.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Foy.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. McAnally.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries. Admission statement for Bevill State is approved. Item eight A4, renewal of lease agreement with Barnes and Noble College Book Sellers for Southern Union State Community College. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion by Milton.
Second.
Second by Susan Foy. Discussion. Seeing no one wanting to add anything else to this. At this time, we'll move to a roll call vote for the renewal of a lease agreement with Barnes and Noble College Book Sellers at Southern Union State Community College. Ms. Wilkins.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Foy.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. McAnally.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Motion carries. Item eight A5, amendment to the Board of Trustees' bylaws for the Alabama Community College System. At this time, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Ms. Brown. Is that a second by Mr. McAnally?
Matt.
Oh, Matt, I'm sorry. Have a motion second. Any discussion? Any comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Foy.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. McAnally.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Motion carries. Item eight A6, amendment of Board of Trustees' bylaws, Section 8A, paragraphs two and three. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Motion by Milton.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Ms. Brown. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote for the amendment to Board of Trustees' bylaws, Section 8A, paragraph two and three. Ms. Wilkins.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Foy.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. McAnally.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Item nine. Steve Ford's Chancellor Announcements.
Oh, not today.
Okay. Item 10, Chancellor's report.
I have several items on that. I want to talk about LifeTech. As you recall, LifeTech's program located, or a program that was located, in Thomasville, Alabama. It was a combination program where we provided skills training and provided that to parolees or potential parolees who were being housed at that center by the Department of Corrections, pardon and parole. And that's been an ongoing program for a significant number of years. I don't know exactly how long, but for 10 or 12 years at least. The decision was made by pardon and parole not to continue the program. And it was kind of... Kind of a rushed-up decision without any pre-planning. The city of Thomasville and the mayor has been real active in trying to support the program. We have a center that, of course, we have a center in Thomasville, that is the old technical school. But in addition to that, we also have a center next or adjacent to the property that was owned by pardon and parole. Almost 100 acres, I believe. We had a number of employees there. And all of a sudden, we have no students. Well, there's been an ongoing effort by the mayor and by the governor's office and pardon and parole and us to try to decide what we can do and should be doing there. And it's gone through a lot of different iterations. The latest approach was pardon and parole was to transfer the property that was owned by them to the community college system. Well, that's another issue, whether or not we really want all of that property and all of the problems connected to that. And that's something we'd have to look at before we could make that kind of recommendation to the board. They wanted to start a program that we actually participate in already in the city of Mobile, the city of Montgomery, the city of Birmingham, and the city of Huntsville, is a day reporting center for people out on parole but who have to report daily to the center and to receive training in skills programs and our GED and other kinds of programs. To suggest that that program has been going real strong in all those centers would be somewhat of a less-than-accurate statement. So I said, well, I'm only interested if we have an adequate number of people who are going to be reporting. Well, the idea was that the pardon and parole office was going to use their vans to travel throughout an eight-county area to bring those people who have day reporting responsibilities to the center. Said, okay, give me numbers. At this point, the first number they came to us with was well between 5 and 12. Well, we can't take that kind of risk of employing permanent people on a full-time basis with no more students than that. But their position then was, well, that's current, but we think it could become 100. Well, that'd be fine. But still, and I've been working with the president down at Coastal, that this is in his area. What can we do with that center? And we've been looking at the needs in that whole area. I'm just telling you, it's an undecided position at this point. The latest position they have is basically they want us to assist them in lobbying for an increase in their budget. The general fund budget for the operations of pardon and parole was reduced by about $20 million this last budget process. Well, I can't... All of my lobbying efforts is to get funding for the community college system, and I'm willing to be cooperative. But I just can't get in the middle of all of that. That's a decision between the governor's office and the budget chair and the general fund. So I just wanted to make you aware all that's going on. President Pouncy has been looking at the whole service area, he and his workforce people, and trying to... Can be done in terms of use of the facility that we already have, that we own. And as you well know, that whole area is not growing population-wise. So we've been going through and done a lot of analysis on what kinds of programs we could possibly stand up there to make utilization of the existing facility that we own. And we're ongoing with that process. It's an ongoing discussion, ongoing effort. I'd love to help the city of Thomasville as much as we can, but it has to be a decision that we can make some financial rational decision about. The mayor has been most cooperative in pushing. So I just want to make you aware of the ongoing. And at some point, when and if there is a decision, and I've been working with the governor's office on this. I met with them earlier this week. So as we go forward, I just want you to be aware of all of that because it's, there's been some articles in the paper, local papers, and those kinds of things. But before we even attempt to say, well, we're interested in the property, we'd have to look at all that. And then what would we do with it if we were interested? The city wants that property as well. So I just want to make you aware of that. There's no action taken obligating us at this point. But we do have a line item budget in the budget that will begin, beginning of this next fiscal year. So I'm working with the budget chairs and trying to keep them posted. So that's just a matter of information. Any questions about that particular issue? As you know, when the legislature came back, they passed obviously the budget, but they also passed a public school college authority bond issue. Out of that bond issue, the community college system will receive about $120 million. I met with the presidents sometime after that. And what I've asked the presidents to do, I don't want you to be thinking about what kind of building am I going to build or what kind of renovation are we going to undertake? That's down the road. I've asked each president to come up with what they think their school should look like in 2030. And I want it backed up by research, by some logical evaluation of what that school needs to be doing and moving toward. We may not know all that, but we need to be planning on programs and what kinds of new programs or what kind of programs are not adequate and may need to be phased out or whatever the case. But we don't need to just start off saying we know we've got some bond money. And ultimately, that money is allocated to the system, which means that this board will have to make a decision about how it's going to be distributed. Now, I know we're going to say every school should get some of that money, but we need a plan or instruction before we start talking about who's going to get what kind of money for what kind of buildings. That's kind of my report on that one. We're working with them, and it's going to take a while to get through this whole planning process. So I see several months before we get to a point where we can start meeting with each individual school and talking about your dreams and what you think you need to do and what you have to do. I have said, through this process, I want to make sure that every classroom that we teach students in is equipped as it should be with technology and that it's comfortable and we have everything available to those students that needs to be available to them. So that's kind of where we are with that whole issue. I think it's just something, we don't need to start talking about who's going to get what building. We need to talk about what are we going to do in the system across the board to expand the offerings or either in some cases eliminate some of the offerings. We've... I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that this whole, since March, has put a strain on the operations of all of our schools. But our folks have been super, in my judgment, of stepping up to the plate. I'm proud of what they have done in delivering online learning. I think we probably were more prepared for that than most anybody else. But they've done a lot of planning. And with the relaxing of some of the rules, our schools have been able to go back to the business of providing the skills training programs in particular, the labs. But we required them to prepare a plan for how they were going to do that. And in many instances, they broke down the size of the group into smaller groups and phased it in so that they maintained the limited size of the class and maintained the distance and everything else. So they've been able to move forward with meeting some of those standards. And I just want them to know across the system how much we appreciate what they've done. Excuse me. In addition to that, they're all working now, and I'm not sure how many have already filed, but our schools are working on the fall plan. What are you going to do in the fall and how are we going to manage the, basically restarting face-to-face teaching? We're asking them to prepare that plan, file it here, we review it, discuss it with each school. And as we go forward, we're comfortable that we'll be as prepared as we possibly can be if in fact, we are in a position where we can start face-to-face instruction. I think we'll probably continue a lot of face-to-face and a combination of that and online learn. So that's kind of an update of where we are. It's, we requested and required a lot of work on the part of the schools. But we felt like we had to do a major job planning to be in a position to say we've done everything we should have done to protect as many people as we possibly could in this process. And, Mr. Chair, that's pretty much my report right now.
Great report, Chancellor. I know these have been difficult circumstances, and I know the board will join me in encouraging you, encouraging the president, and all of your staff, and first congratulating them on how we've done thus far through this pandemic. And just encourage you as you go forward and we get faced... And just encourage you as you go forward and we get face-to-face classrooms. Our, time-wise, we'll be able to go straight into our work session upon adjournment, regular meeting. Our next meeting is set up for July 8, 2020 at 10:00 a.m. in Montgomery, and it will be the board's decision as to whether, in what fashion, we'll meet for July. Any comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, let me make one, I should have mentioned this. We started back here this week. We've been open all the time, but a majority, a vast majority of our total staff is at work in this building now. So it's, eventually, everyone will be here. We do have some special cases where there's some self-protection, and then we do have a few instances where a worker has some very young children and childcare is not being provided at this point. So we do have a limited, we pretty much are close to full staff.
Thank you for that, Chancellor. And I want to add that the support for the board in this distance meeting and communication has been just exceptional. Your staff's done a fine job, and I thank you for that. I know the board feels that way.
And I'd like to commend the presidents and staff too for their work they've done during these times, and also like to congratulate those students that were able to graduate and those that received their certifications. I know it's been a little different, but again, I really very proud of them and would like to extend my congratulations.
Excellent point. Anyone else? Seeing nothing further at this time, I'll entertain just a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Milton.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, just say yes.
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 We'll adjourn. Okay, we'll go straight into our work session. The first section is executive for the work session. We have three recommended policy changes.
Mr. Thompson, this is David O'Brien. I'll address the first policy. It's a new policy numbered 520.01. It deals with the information and documentation required for the purchase, sale, or receipt through donation of real property. The purpose of this new policy is to formalize the information and documentation required for the board's consideration of a purchase, sale, or acceptance of a gift of real property. I think you'll find that the information and documentation required for each is rather straightforward. It's a little different for each one, but this is a minimum, and additional information may be required under the policy by any committee of the board or the board itself. The one thing I would add with regard to the receipt of donated real property is that we are currently working on a disclosure of information form to be filled out by a potential donor, which we will use for the purpose of conducting a conflicts of interest analysis. And I hope to be in a position to share that with, draft disclosure form with each of you by early next week. Does anyone have any questions regarding the proposed policy 520.01?
None from me.
No, I would just like to say thank you to the facilities committee for working with the policy committee and structuring this, and we worked really well on, and quickly to get this done along with Ed and Nathan, so I appreciate you all.
Anything else? Any other comments or discussion on the recommended adoption of policy 520.01? If not, we'll move on to item two.
Mr. Thompson, Sarah Calhoun will address items two and three.
You're good.
Good morning, everyone. The proposal for your consideration is a revision to policy 316.01, which is in regards to the reporting of travel for our colleges. The request to change is with the monthly out-of-state travel report that the colleges are currently being requested to submit. We are also revising a portion regarding foreign travel to actually a report directly to the chancellor or a consideration of the chancellor's approval for foreign travel prior to the travel occurring and the report to the board for any out-of-country travel. This is a coincidence that it's occurring during the COVID pandemic. It has nothing to do with the travel concerns during the pandemic. It is just simply a matter of easing the reporting guidelines on the colleges and putting the comments from the president solely for their in-state and out-of-state travel activities. In conjunction with 316.01, it impacted policy 901, which is the third item on the agenda. The requested change there is to just clarify the inclusion of the chancellor's approval prior to the solidifying the, any foreign travel and the responsibilities of providing that travel report for the chancellor so that he may disseminate it to the board. Any questions about other one of these policy changes?
None from me.
No.
Thanks very much.
Anything from board on those two recommended policy revisions on travel?
None from me.
And international education experience? Seeing none, we'll move on to item four under legal.
The item number four is Gaston State's request for approval of its entering into an amendment to its lease agreement with the U.S. Department of Labor with regard to certain property and buildings primarily located on the college's valley campus. Under the terms of the lease, an appraisal is to be conducted every five years with respect to the rental value of the property. Such an appraisal was conducted in March, and as a result, it was determined that the rental value of the subject property had increased in the amount of $10,853 for an annual rent. As a result of the appraisal, the college will receive an annual increase in the rental payments of $10,853. The amendment only changes the revised rental payments due to the college on an annual basis. Does anyone have any questions regarding this item? I'll move then to item number five, which is the request for approval of the Alabama Community College System purchasing for the use and benefit of Chattahoochee Valley Community College, the Adams Administration Building and adjoining parking lot from Troy University. This proposed property purchase has been in the works for approximately a year and a half. Troy University started with an asking price of $1.8 million, and Vice Chancellor Brian Helms has negotiated Troy down to a purchase price of $1 million. The Adams Building is a three-story building with over 22,000 square feet. It was appraised in 2018 for a value of $1.75 million. The property is located immediately across the street from Chattahoochee Valley's campus and is comprised of approximately 1.61 acres. The environmental, Phase One environmental assessment has been ordered on the property. A title binder has also been ordered with respect to the property. Troy will retain an easement across the parking lot for access to its parking lot adjoining its bookstore, which is adjacent to the administration building. President Screws will now address the rationale for the college's desire to purchase the Adams Administration Building.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Chairman Thompson, members of the board, Chancellor Baker, I want to thank you for the opportunity to share information regarding the college's need and vision for the purchase of the Adams Building from Troy University. First and foremost, I want to say that Chattahoochee Valley Community College is a very small college campus with only eight buildings that are used for instructional and support services. The only other structures on the campus are a greenhouse, which is in the state of Detroit here, the baseball softball complex, and a security kiosk. And these three structures cannot be used for student services or instructional purposes. With that said, the college has limited ability to grow programs and improve services if additional facilities are not acquired or constructed. We are requesting to purchase the Adams Building as a means for enhancing services to our students and addressing the need for additional instructional space. First, we propose to develop a one-stop student success center to house all student services functions and the business office under one roof. Currently, these services are located in three separate buildings on campus, and the current location causes a great deal of confusion and inconvenience for our students. We believe that we can better serve our students through a one-stop center. Secondly, we plan to relocate the Public Safety Instructional Division, which encompasses emergency medical services, science, and criminal justice from the Key Hall basement right now, which is, Key Hall is our gymnasium, and these programs will be located to the Adams Building. This will create an environment that is much more conducive for instructing. And we believe that relocating these programs would allow them space to grow and to better interact with students in a, in a whole college, a complete environment. Their current location is awkward to navigate, and it is not, it doesn't represent the college in the best light. It is quite frankly not an instructional space. Also, we will relocate our orientation classes to the Adams Building, freeing up space for the college to implement a standalone LPN program. We have gotten a number of requests to train LPNs to address a shortage, to address a shortage of nurses at this level. Are you all, are you all able to hear me clearly?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Finally, once programs and services are positioned in the Adams Building, the college will be able to reallocate the spaces that have been vacated as a result of these relocations. Specifically, our maintenance department does not have a designated space currently, and our plan is to locate them in the basement of Key Hall. We think that that would be a space that is more conducive for a maintenance staff than it would be for an instructional program. We also have three offices that will move from the Instructional and Performing Arts Center to the space being vacated by our admissions office, which is currently in Wallace Hall. This move will provide needed space for our LPN faculty that we are planning to hire to support that standalone LPN program. The Information Technology Department will relocate to the current business office, and that will provide them additional space to house a team that we call the Parrot Information Technology Crew or the PIT Crew. And this is a group that provides a technology help desk for our students, and we have learned in this COVID-19 environment that that is critical to make sure that we have adequate space for information technology support. The space vacated by the testing center, which right now the testing center is in our Brazel Hall, will become instructional space to be used for the math department for math learning support. The space vacated by and success recruiting and financial aid areas, which are located in Wilson Hall, will become quiet study areas for our students and a designated space for veterans. In conclusion, we believe that the acquisition of the Adams Building will be a catalyst for change at the college, and this building for us is much needed. We have provided, in your, a packet of information in your packets that gives a total description of everything that I have described, including floor plans. So I hope that that information has proven to be very helpful in your understanding of what we are attempting to do here at the college. And at this time, I will turn the presentation over to Ed Watley to discuss a little bit further about those things that support the Adams Building so that it will be conducive for our use.
Is Ed on?
He is connected. Let's see if we can move him over. He is connected, sir. He is not muted, so I'm not sure what's going on.
Ed, is your phone muted?
Have y'all sent him a text?
I just did. We both did.
I don't know if Ed can hear us, but while we're waiting on it, I have an exception or a question about the appraisal on that property, and probably Ed would need to answer that. Hopefully, he can hear. But I find it strange that the appraisal of this property, President Screws uses a comparison to one piece of property in Birmingham and two pieces of property in Fairhope, Alabama. in Fairhope, Alabama. I just find that odd that they would use that. Is that somebody in the real estate business or knows more about appraisals than I do? Find that to be a little bit unusual?
John, I have not followed up with my appraisal friends on this. They, and Blake Mike can jump in. They, if they find a property, if there are some significant differences due to market, they make, they make, they have a formula to make adjustments for it. But I've always found that a little troubling about appraisals. But anyway, that was a question that I also had. Ed with us yet?
Ed's having some audio trouble. He's working on it. So if we keep moving forward, I think we'll come back to Ed as soon as he's able.
Mr. Milton, I was going to say, I just think it's a great plan and great strategy. One question I had was regarding the traffic. Would there be a crosswalk? Is that a busy street? You know, the students are going over for the one-stop registration, one-stop services?
There is a street between our campus and the Adams Building, Mr. Davis, but there is a crosswalk because we share the usage of the Troy University bookstore. So our students are already at crosswalk to get to that bookstore.
Great. Great plan.
Well, let me also add too that Troy originally operated out of this center. They have since built a new facility downtown right on the river. And so their campuses, not the same campus it was prior to that. And John, I do find the appraisal that provided some good, good information for us for the purpose of not accepting the appraised value. It just, and we've gone through this on several other appraisals too, with Armour Center in Demopilis. They quoted and valued, created a value for that property that there's no way it was going to sell for that in the city of Demopilis. But they'd used some numbers out of Birmingham and the surrounding area. I don't, I don't understand why they do that. Well, I do too, but I just, it was something if, if that appraisal was going to be something that we would have had to pay, then it just wouldn't have been logical at all.
Understand.
John, this is Chuck. I think you're dead on. Appraisals outside of a certain area to me are pretty much irrelevant.
Ed is down there. We're moving him over now, so we'll be up to here.
Where are we on that time-wise? Getting Ed on?
Mr. Thompson, now.
Okay, good deal. Ed Watley, you have a call.
I sincerely apologize. I've been able to hear the entire meeting, but apparently my microphone would not work. The one item that I would like to add to what President Scroos and David have already mentioned. In the materials presented in the packet, it says the Phase One Environmental Report has been ordered. In fact, the Phase One Environmental Site Visits have been completed. GMC is only waiting on some historical information from the current owner of the facility to complete the written Phase One Environmental Report. I can tell you that GMC has told me that in their site investigations, they have found nothing that would be of concern to those wanting to buy the building. There should be no recognized environmental conditions raised in the Phase One report. And so the building, all indications are the building has a clean bill of health in terms of the environmental report. We should get the final Phase One Environmental Report back to us by the end of next week. Again, I apologize for the audio difficulties, but can answer any questions from the board regarding this action item.
Ed, you heard what John said about appraisals coming out of Birmingham and Fairhope. You know, we ran into that, getting some appraisals from Demopilis out of Birmingham. How is that even relevant? Why would we go to that type expense to get these appraisals?
Mr. Smith, I cannot answer. I think the appraisal we're talking about was, was completed back in 2018. And I am not a real estate appraiser by any means, and so I can't explain how they chose the comparables to use as part of the appraisal that we got. Certainly, if the board would, would like a different appraisal, we could always go back and ask the same firm to do a new appraisal using different comparables or find a different firm altogether. But I cannot speak to why they chose the comparables that they did.
I think that Al's done a pretty good job of negotiating the price. And if the chancellor said they, they're aware of the, they, it, I think they went in with their eyes open. So I don't know about the cost of another appraisal. And a lot of times in markets, there are no comps. And, you know, a similar property, so, but there are different reasons for.
He's done a good job negotiating the price to attract it.
Anything else from Mr. Watley or from President Scroos?
Al, this is Blake.
Yes, sir. Blake.
I was just going to say, I'm certain the answer to this is that there are no comps that are current in the area. And that is the standard requirement of the appraiser. By rule, he has to find a comparable sale that's only a certain amount of time old to be able to apply that. And in this area, there likely has not been one. That's why they go out. Now, the formulas are set up to be able to make, you know, an adjustment when you come from one municipality to an area of different market to another market. The question is, you know, is that properly applied? I don't know. It would take a separate appraiser, probably doing the same thing, to have a second appraisal, a check.
I do want to add that, that, Mr. McAnally, you are exactly in that in the Phoenix City, Alabama market, there are not even buildings that are comparable to this particular building. The only structure in the area that would, would be the newly constructed building that was at Troy University. That would not have been a building that would have been at Troy University. So I just don't think the comps are even there are many multi-story buildings in Phoenix, Alabama.
Thank you, President Scroos. Anything else from board members? Any questions for Mr. Watley or for President Scroos? If not, I've got a comment. President Scroos, this is one of the best presentations on acquisition of a property that I've seen since I've been on this board.
Thank you so much. We received a lot of work from him at the system office, and I'm confident that we would not be in the position that we're in were not for the help of Ed Watley, Brian Helms, David O'Brien, and the leadership of the chancellor. So I appreciate you saying that, but we received a lot of help.
Well, that, that's great. And you're, it was a lot of information, but your nice overview that you submitted was tremendous help. And I'll tell you, this could serve as a template for future recommendations brought to the board. I'm just, that's just my personal opinion. But thank you, President Scroos. Thank you, Chancellor Baker. This was, this was just top-notch, and it's really appreciated. Anything, any other comments or questions about this particular item from the board? Then we'll move on to item six, purchase of real property for Coastal Alabama Community College.
This is the request for approval of the Alabama Community College System purchasing for the use and benefit of Coastal Alabama Community College, a tract of approximately 9.56 acres of unimproved, unimproved property that is located as part of the college's boundary for its Baymanet campus. The property was originally listed at $120,000. President Pouncy was able to successfully negotiate the purchase price down to $72,000. An appraisal has been conducted with respect to the property and found that its appraised value was $72,000. A Phase One environmental study has been conducted on the property, and it was determined that there was a recognized environmental condition with respect to a piece of adjoining property. As a result, additional testing was performed on the property, and we received last evening the results of that additional testing. I will leave it up to our expert engineer, Mr. Watley, to address the studies. But I would call on now Dr. Pouncy to provide the board with the rationale of the college for the purchase of this piece of property.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, and thank you, board, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Chancellor Baker, good to hear you this morning. We have identified four small parcels of property that join the campus here in Baymanet. As you know, under the old Faulkner label, there were, there was no technical programs being offered on this campus with the way that industry is growing. And we have a big mega site at the end of Highway 59 and Interstate 65 that will be up and coming big industrial park. To me, it's important that we prepare for the future and allow us to have some technical classes, classroom space here in Baymanet. Currently, our technical classes here in the north part of Baldwin County are being housed in a, at the Baldwin County Board of Education Technical Center, which is an old facility about two blocks away from our campus. The Baldwin County Board of Education is also in the process of building a new standalone technical high school down below Locksley. So in, to prepare this campus for the future, I'm anticipating the loss of the space we're currently using at the North Baldwin Center for Technology. We also have several programs that are off of campus. Our adult ed, our workforce development classes are across a four-lane highway. And to me, it's important that all of those programs be on this campus. And so for that reason, we're asking permission from the Board of Trustees to purchase this property. As I said, we identified four parcels. This is the first. And hopefully, over the course of the next months or so, that we can acquire the other three parcels. And I think that will not only give the campus room to grow and meet the needs of one of the fastest-growing areas in the state, but also will enhance the curb appeal. Because as you know, Coastal Alabama is the gateway to the coast. How many people come every day down, going to the beach? And it's important for me and for the community college to portray the right vision and the right look when people come by our front door. And that's what we're trying to work to improve here at Coastal Alabama.
Thank you. Go ahead. Let me add a little bit to this because I don't know how to explain this other than just the, the operation at Old Faulkner at the community college. You had, even the president's office was scattered around. It was hardly an office. There was no center of operation before President Pouncy started. And he's begun to build kind of a center of administrative function. Get people scattered all around. And, and HR office was kind of not operational. The president's office and the chief financial person's office wasn't close. And just a whole variety of things that we're trying to correct with his leadership in that area. In addition, undertaking things to make the campus better looking as you drive down the highway, not all hidden behind some trees, trimming up some things like that, and dealing with property that had been neglected for a long time. This is an overall effort to open up the campus, create organization on the campus that makes some sense, like with one-stop centers and the administrative center and a variety of other kinds of activity. It's a much-needed activity, and this is one of our flagship schools. And I just think that the approach that is being taken by President Pouncy is trying to do what we're all talking about doing, and what is the school going to look like down the road? And make it. It's a good place, a good school and a good community. And we just need to do a lot of things to assist that school becoming what it can be.
Ed, this is Chuck. Before you get into your presentation, Dr. Pouncy, thanks for indulging me in all the questions and having conversations with me Monday while I was down there. The only concern I had was there was some conversations about an old service station tanks. But after talking to Al and Dr. Pouncy and Ed, all of that was actually cleaned up on a four-lane highway there on the west side. But my understanding is we got all clear yesterday, saw today and last night, with no further actions. And the ones ever going to tell you that it's totally clear, but the statement, no further actions, was a, was a good, good sign that there was no leakage in the past going over on the property. So after laying eyes on it, Pouncy, thank you for negotiating this price. As Al mentioned with Dr. Scroos, this was a very informative and very thorough package that was put together. And thank you for hearing your staff and Ed, Nathan, everybody's work on this.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I'm assuming the zoning's good on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's already been taken care of. It helps when your chief financial officer is also on the zoning commission.
Dr. Pouncy, this is Ed Watley. And the one thing I'd like to add is that Mr. Smith is correct. We do have in writing that the former retail petroleum station on the adjoining property is no longer considered a recognized environmental condition. And so we will be adding this phase two to the packet for this action item, and will be included when it goes back out to the board prior to the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Watley.
Anything else on the coastal recommendation?
None for me.
I want to thank President Pouncy and Chancellor Baker on their assessment of what, of what's needed in acquisitions of adjoining property. This, I would just tell you from my perspective, it makes sense. And I'll just, and looks, looks like a very reasonable plan to pursue. Anything else? If not, we'll move to item seven, allocation of industry certification funds for 1920.
This is a request for the allocation of a portion of the 2019-2020 industry certification funds. This allocation will be a grant to Southern Union State Community College in the amount of $22,500 to go towards the college's purchase of a CNC lathe to support the machine tool technology program at the college. Does anyone have any questions regarding this item?
Yeah, David, is this the total cost of the lathe? That looks a little low. Are there funds coming from somewhere else, or is this what...
This is not the total cost of the lathe. The college will contribute any funds necessary to purchase the lathe over and above the $22,500.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
If not, we'll move to Item Eight, Recommended Renovations to the Opelika Administration at Southern Union Community College.
Mr. Thompson, this is Ed. Southern Union State Community College is requesting authorization to execute a construction contract and to proceed with renovations to the Opelika Administration Building. The purpose of this project is to provide students with all of the services needed for registration in one location. This project was bid on May 21st of this year. We received three bids for the low bid of $751,000. The highest bid that we received was over $1 million. If the Board approves this action item, we will execute the construction contract immediately after approval. It is our intent to start construction in the third quarter of this year and have construction complete by the second quarter of 2021. This should have the one-stop center ready and available for registration in the fall of 2021. This item was presented to the Board of Trustees Facility Committee, and they agreed to have this action item presented this morning to the full Board. Be happy to answer any questions about this action item, if there are any.
I'm just gonna say again what I said on the conference call. The Opelika campus is freely utilized, and it needs some attention. And so I'm glad y'all are doing this. Anyone else?
Ed's completion at the beginning of the second quarter. I was just looking at six-month schedule. Is that about right?
I would say the end of the second quarter, so about the end of the school year, and that gives us summer to move in and have it available prior to the start of registration for the fall.
Okay, very good.
Anyone else on the Southern Union? Item Eight. If not, David, are we ready with Item Nine, the place over?
Yes, sir, we are. And Sarah Calhoun is going to address this item.
Good morning again. This action item, while very detailed, is pretty straightforward in the respect that it's equipment purchases specifically for the Alamat project with the colleges listed Bishop, Calhoun, Northwest Shoals, and Wallace State Hamsel. The intention is to put this before the Board because many of the items being purchased are greater than $500,000 in total. So to be in compliance with Board Policy 30901, we wanted to capture all of the activity for these equipment purchases. Even though they do not all fall within that Board policy, we wanted to go ahead and get all of the equipment requests before the Board so that the colleges can be able to... These equipment purchases will be 100% funded with the Alamat Grant Program. It is a shared program between workforce and Alamat, but the funds for these particular requests are all Alamat-funded. Questions regarding the equipment purchase or the request?
Anyone? I recognize Blake McAnally. He has an update for the Board on One ACCS.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, had a meeting on May 27th with the team. They have a report that they presented that was completed through the end of April. And I just wanted to quickly give everyone an update on it. The risks that we are still facing are the impact of working from home. We do obviously have some challenges with our ACCS and Aleutian team members, but these have been really worked through pretty well. That risk has been accepted and continues to be monitored. With respect to schedule, significant work remains for go-live readiness, but it is proceeding well. Our team, again, is working together to cover all the responses as they come up. Some of the unknowns that remain at individual colleges are with skill sets of the individuals that will be operating the system, illnesses, and then personnel turnover. Those are risks that we can't really predict. And one of the reasons that we still leave our setting at yellow and that red, yellow, green type of risk mitigation. The last thing, with respect to resources and environments, our focus continues for go-live readiness, technical databases. They're being tuned, they're being load-tested, they're being sized to fit particular colleges. And again, this is probably our largest risk that we have is to making sure that each module works well at each college's difference. Team are actually tracking this three times a week and providing very detailed updates on technical environment, activity, and readiness. So I feel like they're doing a great job in watching closely. As you might recall, Cohort Two is the cohort that is switching over from a previous software to Aleutian Banner. This, every one of these softwares had to be... ...data gone extremely well. So it couldn't really have gone any better than we anticipated, than we had hoped. Other things, recent accomplishments, environmental readiness, simulation, testing going on everywhere. There are a lot of go-live training that are happening across the system and all this cohort, this Cohort Two. There are some third-party systems that are currently being integrated. We have a team of nine report writers who are working on 120 reports that will be standardized and distributed across the system. Forty-six of those are prioritized reports that will be used on a regular basis. And when it comes right down to it, I think this is the goal of what we were really hoping to be able to get. We have standardization of reports and real-time reports across the system at any time. Just to, I guess, give you a quick look at the schedule. Well, let me back up and say this. Financial aid live for all 24 schools. So that was a big step. We had that ready at the first of May. So going forward, all of our schools have financial aid up and running. So there's been a lot of simulation testing going on, again, load testing. Schedule-wise and budget-wise, the project duration, I'll remind you, began in June of 2018 and is scheduled to go through April 21, a 35-month schedule. This report is of April 30th of 2020. So the project duration is 66%, so we're two-thirds of the way through. The Aleutian Services Time and Materials Budget is right about 71%, so it's on schedule. The fixed fee time that our Aleutian partners had allocated is about 82%, but their time is front-loaded because they're in, they have more support going on now, so we're making the transition. But all in all, we're very close to our budget. As I've stated before, some of the budget with our support team will run ahead of the completion budget, but will tail off on the end. Honestly, we expect the budgets for time and for support costs to be right on target at this point. I just want to say, the team that we have pulled together has done a great job, the President, and each of the college's staff that are having to take on this change. It's a very big deal, and we recognize that it somewhat upsets the apple cart for everybody for at least a period of time. But the response has been fantastic. We are very close. You know, we're less than a year away of a three-year project of having everything that we planned completed. So just wanted to give you that update. I do have this report in a written form with much more detail, and I can forward it on to the Board members if you'd like to have it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Blake, and thank you for your work. It takes a lot of time. Thank you for the work of your committee. Any questions for Mr. McAnally? Chancellor, do you have anything to add on that? Or anything else?
No, I think that that was a thorough report. I would also like to say, make an announcement the next time when we get something in final. But here in the office, we've undergone the transition as well. In fact, we've probably set a record. I think we switched from the STARS program that the controller requires to the Aleutian standard here in about a three-month period of time. And we've gone through that, and it's taken a lot of extra work, a tremendous amount on the part of IT, on the part of my financial people and all of that. They've done a tremendous job, and I think it's gonna pay a lot of benefits and dividends as we go forward. And the other thing I'd like to mention, I guess, is as a result of all of this and what we've been doing, we've saved the schools a lot of money. Because we picked up the cost for the license, the operations, and not the operations, but the license and other kind of fees, and purchased a lot of software that has become system-wide software instead of just individual schools. So it's been a financial benefit for the schools. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Board, any other comments from the Board? I just, I know we've gone a little long. I do want to, again, thank Mr. McAnally and the Finance and Audit Committee for the work they've done on this, as well as thank all the Board members for their work on the Board. Thank you for your contributions and your leadership in regard to the committees that function. And you just do a great job on that. And I know it's a sacrifice for you, so just know that it doesn't go unnoticed. It's appreciated. If there's nothing else, we will adjourn.
Make a motion.